What's that?
Is your internet working?
Yes, barely. Yes, but do you have the internet?
All right, Carl.
The meeting tonight is for the conduct of town business by the town board. The public is invited to participate at the items marked on the agenda public comment. During that segment of the meeting, if you have a question or comment for the supervisor, please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please state your full name and limit your remarks to three minutes. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation.
Thank you. And tonight we have a public hearing on local law of the year 2023, Local Law Five, 2023, amend chapter 155 zoning, Article Six, Supplementary Regulations Governing Certain Uses, Section 155-30, Section B, Design Standards of the Town of Marlborough Zoning Code. So that public hearing is open as of right now, and I will get back to that, but first I want to do the pledge of allegiance, okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for a moment of silence for all the men and women who sacrificed their lives to give us the opportunity to serve our country, our state, and the small town of Marlborough. Okay, so again, it's a public hearing on zoning change, 155-30/B. What this is about is basically for the distance between buildings, structures, and we're changing the zoning to say if it's, there it is, Mark, if it's more than a 20-acre parcel, that we're going to allow it to be 15 feet apart, and they have to abide by New York State codes for fire, and that actually is the code. So we're not doing anything that's outside the New York State code. It's just we're making our code more usable and friendly for businesses to come in here and build in our community. So if anybody has any comments, this is the time of the meeting that we will take comments on that. Come on up, if you want, come on up, Mayor Mickey.
Mickey Simonofsky, Marlborough, New York. I'm just wondering, the fire, both fire chiefs are on board with this?
Yep, they were both notified, as well as obviously the planning board and the county. So yeah, the, you know, main thing is it's abides by New York State fire code. So we're having other meetings about other things about some of these developments as far as, you know, needing other equipment, let's say, because, you know, we have some, you know, bigger buildings with taller buildings. And so I think our town's getting to the point where at least one of our stations, or maybe both, are going to need a ladder truck.
Yeah.
And that's something that we're going to look into, hopefully figure out how we can do that without hitting the taxpayers and having these developers maybe participate in helping finance those, those high-valued trucks. So, but yeah, they know about it.
And does this zoning code only enforce in the commercial areas, or is this throughout the entire town right now, in case there's a development someplace?
Yeah, these are for multi, was it multifamily, Tom is what it's considered?
Correct.
Multifamily, right?
So it could be in any, any zone, could be the ag zone, the ag R H G one?
This is our zone, right?
Zone?
All the zones, but you won't find that kind of acreage in a parcel, but the R H G one, potentially Marlboro One, but it's available for R One or R G One. R, if you ever see that size parcel, and C one doesn't even allow it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the reasons too why people ask, why do you have that 20-acre minimum there is because we, you know, we'd rather it be with the larger parcels that we could have that, you know, that distance, whereas if you're under that number, maybe we do want a little separation so you don't build as many on like a smaller acre parcel, right? So that's kind of the logic behind picking that number, so.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, yep. Anybody else? Okay, so then I just need a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved, thank you. All right, so now we're going to get to our regular board meeting for November 13th, 2023, and I need a motion to approve the agenda, but before we do that, I do have to amend that resolution, number 110, and the only thing we have to amend in it is because our attorney looked at it today to double-check, which she does all the time, and the SEACRA wording wasn't exactly the way she said it should be. It's nothing to do with anything previously done, except that I will show you what the difference is. This is the one that's actually here. Do, 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 do. So you can see here, it says, whereas it has previously been determined that the adoption of local law is classified as a type-one action in New York State Environmental Quality Act and its implementing regulation, six M Y C R R, parks, SEACRA, and will issue a negative declaration. So you can see it says, and will issue a negative declaration. What it needs to be changed to is, and the town board and lead agency hereby determines that the proposed action will not result in a significant adverse impact in the environment and thus declares, authorize and approves that negative declaration be issued. So that's the change in what was actually put out there to the public and what's going to be actually voted on tonight. So I need a motion to update resolution number 110, adopt local law number five of the year 2023, in the SEACRA section of that resolution.
I'll make a motion to amend a resolution 110.
I need a second.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and so moved. I think Councilwoman Sessa actually has a section in the Youngs Park adoption, right?
Mm-hmm.
So you want to, it's in the where the town utilizes the property for youth sports and recreation in this section here, and you want to make it to say?
Uh, yes, we'd like to edit that section of the resolution to spell out that it is used for youth baseball and softball.
So instead of saying where is the town utilizes the property for youth sports and recreation, we want to be specific that is used for, the property is used for youth baseball and softball.
And it's actually Section B here, the property be forever known as Youngs Park and the property be used for youth baseball and softball purposes.
Oh, down here you want to change?
Yes.
Where is that?
You can change it in both.
Oh, Section B, you see that, Carl? Section B also? Section B, the property forever known as Young Parks, the property to be used for youth sports and recreational purposes is to say, Youngs Park, the property be used for youth baseball and softball. And the same on the top, right?
Yes.
So not a big change, but we were just trying to be specific that it's basically only going to be used for baseball and softball, and that somewhere down the line, someone doesn't decide we want to make it a soccer field. So, you know, that was what was specifically requested by the property owner, that it would forever be Youngs Park, baseball and softball fields, and that's why we want to make it specific in actual our resolution. So I just need a motion to change that.
I'll make the motion to make that change.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so, okay. So now I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Need a motion to approve the October 23rd, 2023 town board meeting minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the October 23rd, 2023 town board meeting minutes.
Can I second it if I was in there?
You could second it, because you read them, so as long as you read them and you approve.
Okay, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. And I need authorization to pay the bills in the amount of $240,190.70.
And make a motion to authorize the payment of bills of $240,000 and whatever cents it was.
$240,190.70.
Right.
And I signed every one of them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, anybody have any comments on the agenda other than what we changed? Or, okay, so reports of department, as previously said, unless the board members have any issues with what the department head sent us, I'm not going to read every department head's, but if you have a question, this is the time, go ahead.
Yeah, I have one comment. Tommy, in your report, you say you have one-stop work order?
One what?
Stop-work order?
Yeah.
Out of curiosity, what was that, you know, do you recall?
There was a, obviously there was a property doing work, and I had to stop them and make them make the building permit. There was additional roof down in town.
A roofing?
Yeah, there was no roof.
No.
I had no permit. We'd want people on roofs without insurance.
Okay, thank you.
And sometimes people don't realize you need a permit to do a roof, so, but it's their protection, so, because if they don't have a permit and then something happens, their insurance will say, well, you're not covered, so. C A C, you want to see your report though, since I see you have it in your hand there, Mickey?
We needed to postpone our regular meeting for November until the 16th due to meeting room availability, and so we will be meeting this Thursday, November 16th, at 6:30 in the Marlborough Free Library Community Room. Because we had no meeting this month, there is a limited amount to report on, however. Individuals within the group have been active. Due to our meetings, we can let you know that a portion of the benchmark greenhouse gas inventory has been successfully completed, bringing us a little closer to our bronze certification. I plan on attending the recreation committee meeting taking place tomorrow to discuss mutual activities, and I look forward to that meeting. Thank you, Sherida, for arranging that. From my committee to all of our Marlborough residents and the board, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, thank you. And like I was telling you out in the audience, I did meet with the Bayside Project members, Dave and Eric, Baxter's and Rieger, and they will be putting in 10, I believe it's 10, EV charging stations at the Bayside Project there for, it doesn't necessarily have to just be for the people that live there, but if you happen to live there, they're also going to get a little card and they get 50% off the charge, so it's a benefit to them for there, but anybody can actually charge there. So, you know, we're still going to work on our own, but that's good for them.
What kind of vehicles?
I think he says they're going to be universal, but I don't know how that works, so, you know, you know how we had that discussion before about the universal charger and versus a Tesla charger versus Chrysler charger?
Well, my understanding was that each automaker makes their own chargers, so it's like that Tesla can't fit a.
So I guess now they're coming out with, they're coming out with some universal chargers where you could actually, there's connectors or something like that, where you could connect what the car has to that. Look, it's beyond me, but all's I could tell you is they say they're putting 10 of them in. He actually, and I'm going to get with you on that, Mickey, because he gave me the information on the person who's doing it, and they actually took care of all the incidentals as far as the monies and the grants and all that. So I just got all that information the other day, so.
They will get their, they will get the grant money as opposed to the town?
Yeah.
But they'll have the charger.
So we maybe could use that, I don't know, but we're going to call them.
Okay.
Recreation Committee.
Yeah, the Recreation Committee executed the trunk retreat, oh god, it feels like a lifetime ago now, but it was only, only a couple of weeks, and it was wildly successful, I would say. I think we had a larger crowd than we had last year, the weather cooperated, the police department brought a ton of new excitement to the event, as did the fire departments, and there were, I think, 42 trunks in total by the time we were all said and done.
Forty-two or 43 ended up, yeah?
Yeah, 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 maybe 43 actually, with the senator's trunk.
With the last minute, they got the senator.
Yeah, so it was very, very well attended, and the committee worked hard to map out the logistics and make sure that all of the trunks were spread out and fully utilizing the whole loop in the park to try to manage the traffic flow a little bit better than last year, and I think that worked really nicely. So people seemed very happy, the DJ was excellent, and I think it was an all-around great community event, so huge thank you to that committee and to the police department for all of their help. It couldn't, that thing could never be managed without the help of the police team and getting people in and out safely, so much appreciated.
Carlos, our parking man.
Oh, my goodness.
Carlos, the man.
So many cars. So upcoming, the Recreation Committee meets tomorrow at 6:30 at Bricks, if anyone would like to attend. I'm now getting people coming up to me pretty much weekly asking to join the Recreation Committee, so that's great, there's some excitement there. But that's an open meeting, so anyone is able to attend that. And the next two events that the Rec Committee is working on is December 3rd, Sunday, the Hamlet of Milton Tree Lighting Ceremony, and that is in conjunction with the HMA of Milton, and then the following weekend on Sunday will be the Polar Express at the Milton Train Station.
Yep, thank you. You guys are doing a great job as normal, and if you, if you want to follow up on that, they are on Facebook, on social media, they have everything posted on there, and yes, trunk retreat was a very successful event, and it was the first Saturday in eight weeks straight that it didn't rain, and it happened to be 70-something degrees, so it was actually a.
It was amazing.
It was amazing that you picked the right day out of all the days, so. And I do have something from Meet Me in Marlborough. Meet Me in Marlborough conducted kids and adult trick-or-treat in the Hamlet of Marlborough on that same day, which was very successful. We incorporated the new support local Halloween scavenger hunt to help bring more exposure and support to local businesses, services, civil school groups that participated. Scavenger hunt participants had to visit all participating locations in order to enter the raffle. The winner was given a $50 Meet Me in Marlborough gift card. Halloween happening newsletter was put out, and Meet Me in Marlborough's next event is held on 11/18, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. by local event holiday extravaganza at Thanksgiving Farmers Market at the Marlborough Elementary School, and everybody's invited to come. So I don't know if anybody's been there before, but they have this every year at the, at the elementary school, and this year it's on November 18th, starting at 10 o'clock. So I would ask you to stop by and visit, because they have a lot, you know, they have singing, they got music, they got entertainment, and they got a lot of good things to buy, so come and join them there. So anything else on recreation?
No.
Except we're going to be one step closer to owning another park tonight, maybe, so that'd be good. IT Committee, there's nothing new, train station, there's nothing new. Milton Landing Citizens Committee, I haven't got an update on them. Economic Committee, nothing. Meet Me in Marlborough, I just did. Milton and Hamlet Associations Committee, again, they're working with you on the tree lighting ceremony, correct? And so that's happening on December 3rd. December 3rd, we're having the tree lighting ceremony in the Hamlet of Milton, but we're also having the blue light tree lighting ceremony on December 3rd also, right here at the police department. So again, both of these events are online, on social media, you could find out, but I would highly recommend coming to these events, they're, you know, really fun, and especially the blue light ceremony for the police. This is where Kurt Fulton, Officer Fulton honors all the fallen officers that had passed away this year in the line of duty, so it's a somber but very nice event that he puts on for them, so I would ask you to come on December 3rd for that. Transfer station review, we don't have anything, and presentations, we don't have anything, and Tomback rehabilitation update, seems to be never off my list here and never off my mind. But we are there, if you've gone by, you've seen a lot of progress on the exterior, it's pretty much done, it would be actually done on the exterior, except you ran out of one box of siding, so that should be ordered now and be done by this week. The doors were put in. Tonight we'll have on there the construction work for the interior, so as long as we pass that, that'll move forward, starting in probably in a couple of weeks, because you've got to mobilize and get material in there, and then we're off to the races, then we're going to pretty much finish her up, probably in the next two months or three months here, and pushing for spring opening, hopefully for all of us, and hopefully it'll be great. So we're, we're moving forward, so that's what my update is on Tomback. Item number 11, new business, motion to advertise for open position for planning and zoning and ethics. So every year at this time, positions are, come open on these boards, a lot of times it's the same people that will reapply, but we still have to advertise by law, so I need a motion to advertise for positions on the planning, zoning, and ethics boards.
I make a motion to advertise for open position on the planning and zoning and ethics.
Need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And a motion to advertise for an assistant code enforcement officer, so we've had this in the budget, we're going to put this out for advertisement finally, and, you know, Tommy's not getting any younger, so, no, actually, we got, we need this, we're starting, as we've been talking the last few years, building is being increased in our town, and we used to have two, we used to have an assistant and a code enforcement officer, so I think it's time, again, we have it in our budget, and again, it, this is position two that will eventually, you know, take Tom's position when he retires, so, and then we'll be looking again, but it takes probably two years to actually get up to date on everything. So I need a motion to advertise for the assistant code enforcement officer position.
I'll make the motion to advertise for the assistant code enforcement officer.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Correspondence, got a couple. So I just want to read the one from our engineer, and this is, this goes towards our resolution tonight for the rec center, and this is for the contract for the Marlborough Community Rec Center, rebid general construction contract 2023. Bid proposals were received and opened on November 3rd, 2023, 3:00 p.m., and the following is the summary of the base bids. T Koo Park Construction Company, $249,760. Color Fix Painting Inc., $346,276.66. Barone Construction Group Inc., $426,300. The low bidder is T Koo Park Construction Company, Inc. The bid forms were checked for compliance and references checked, the bid forms and submitted are completed to the satisfaction of the engineer. The contractor is not on the current New York State D O L disbarment list dated 10/1/2023. It is our recommendation that the contract Town of Marlborough Community Rec Center bid for general construction contract 2023 be awarded to T Koo Park Construction Company, 52 Western Avenue, Marlborough, New York, 12542, for the base bid in the amount of $249,760. If you have any questions, comments, or require additional information regarding this above, please contact me, and this is from Bell Engineer, Phil Bell, principal. So that'll go towards our resolution. This one is from, dear supervisor, we'd like to request that the above referred property be added to the Marlborough Sewer District. The 7.32-acre property is currently before the planning board for the site plan application proposing the construction of a four multifamily residential unit. Each unit is proposed to contain six two-bedroom multifamily units for a total of 12 bedrooms per building and 48 bedrooms total within 24 units. Projected wastewater flow rate for the proposed development is 5,280 gallons per day, 48 bedrooms at 110 gallons per day per bedroom. Please do not hesitate to call for any questions. Sincerely, William Engineering, Matthew Town, P E. So again, they're just informing of this, this has to go through a process, goes to our engineering and to our attorney, and then it can be accepted in, but there's a process that's going to go with that, so it's going to be a little while, but they're formally requesting that they're going to want to be in. And Jerry, I didn't get nothing from you. My, a miracle, there's nobody left. That's all I got for correspondence, so do we have any public comments besides what we talked about? No? Okay, perfect, we're going to get right into resolutions. Someone's in the audience waiting, waiting. Michael, come on up here, come on up, we're going to read this with you up here, come on up. This is an honor to do this for you, my friend, stand right here. So Resolution 107, to appoint a part-time police officer for the purpose of attending the police academy. Supervisor Corcoran proposes to file, whereas the chief of police requests the appointment of Michael Tronsalito as part-time police officer for the purpose of attending the Ulster County Police Academy. Now therefore be resolved that Michael Tronsalito be appointed as part-time police officer to attend the Ulster County Police Academy effective immediately and moves for its adoption.
Councilwoman Sessa?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes. Welcome to the team, Michael.
Come on, let's get out of his way. Let him get the nice thing in.
I know. I know. You get it, Charles. Congratulations, very exciting.
When do you start the test?
Wednesday?
Oh, boy.
He's been through, he's already taken one, right?
I know.
Chief, you want to say anything about that?
What's that?
You want to explain anything about that, how that works with the phase one and stuff? So a lot of people don't know how that works.
So, in Michael's case, he attended phase one, which is done through Ulster County Community College. You attend phase one as a civilian, and you need to get sponsored for phase two. There's, there are certain officers or certain people that are associated with the police department that can attend phase one as a police officer, and then they don't need phase two sponsorship because they're already a police officer. In this case, we're sponsoring Michael for phase two, he did phase one on his own, am I right? Right? Yep, so we're just doing phase two for him. Allows him to do the additional trainings, you can only do it as a sponsored, having a sponsor for a police department, otherwise you don't get to attend phase two. If you can't get phase two sponsorship, all the work you did for phase one only lasts for two years, so if you don't get that sponsorship, it goes to the wayside, it was good practice. In today's day, it's a little easier to get phase two sponsorship because everybody's looking for people. We were lucky enough to find out about Mike while he was in phase one, so I scooped him up right away, didn't wait for phase two to approach. He successfully passed our background, psychological fingerprints, and everything else Bruce made him go through to get where we are today. My limited action, or interactions with him have been pleasurable, and I look forward to ruining the rest of his life. He's going to have a good time.
Michael, you just got to give us X amount of years, don't leave like all these other.
Well, that's the other negative thing, but yeah, Mike's young, he's going to continue to take the test, I know his goal's to be a full-time cop.
Yeah.
We'll see, it, it may work out, it may work out to keep him local, but again, state police pay twice what we pay, Westchester three times.
Hey, stop, now you sound like the guys on the negotiating team. What side you going to be on tomorrow?
I'm going to be on Mike's side. If I can get you $100,000 a year, we're, good luck with that.
Tomorrow we have PBA negotiations, so.
So hopefully we can keep the locals local. Mike lives here in town, he's been here. Allows him to do the additional trainings. You can only do it as a sponsored, having a sponsor for a police department. Otherwise, you don't get to attend phase two. If you can't get phase two sponsorship, all the work you did for phase one only lasts for two years. So if you don't get that sponsorship, it goes to the wayside, it was good practice. In today's day, it's a little easier to get phase two sponsorship because everybody's looking for people. We were lucky enough to find out about Mike while he was in phase one, so I scooped him up right away. Didn't wait for phase two to approach. He successfully passed our background psychological fingerprints and everything else Bruce made him go through to get where we are today. My limited action, or interactions with him have been pleasurable, and I look forward to ruining the rest of his life. Gordon, he's gonna have a good time.
Michael, you just gotta give us X amount of years, don't leave like all these other.
Well, that's the other negative thing, but yeah. Mike's young, he's gonna continue to take the test. I know his goal's to be a full-time cop.
Yeah.
We'll see, it may work out, it may work out to keep him local, but again, state police pay twice what we pay, Westchester three times.
Now you sound like the guys on negotiating team. What side you gonna be on tomorrow?
I'm gonna be on Mike's side. If I get you, if I get you $100,000, you're working. Good luck with that.
Um, tomorrow, we have PBA negotiations, so.
So hopefully, we can keep the locals local. Mike lives here in town, he's been here all his life, he's in the fire department. It'd be, it'd be great to have, understandable. Hopefully, now in the next couple of weeks, if he comes to me and says he's got a full-time offer, I wouldn't doubt they're gonna come his way.
Yeah, exactly. I can't begrudge anybody for doing that, that's great. You know, what I, what I really respect, Michael, is, like you said, he's a, he's a ready does fire, he's already a fireman, right? He stepped up at an early age and did that for our community, and now he's putting himself out there to be a police officer. So I, you know, that's very respectful, and I, you know, I wish we had more guys like you out there to do these types of things. So, you know, we appreciate it, and I think you're gonna get some great training here in our town. And again, if you move on to bigger and better things, I'm happy for you, because that's, you know, that's what it's all about. Making, being happy and, you know, having a career. So, welcome to Marlboro as a force, and we're happy to have you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And you guys don't have to stay to rest at a meeting, you can leave. So it's up to you, we're not gonna be that much longer. So I have another one here, Resolution 108, to appoint a part-time police officer for the purpose of attending the police academy. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following, whereas Chief of Police requests the appointment of Emily Aldrich to a part-time police officer for the purpose of attending the Ulster County Police Academy. Now therefore be resolved that Emily Aldrich be appointed as part-time police officer to attend Ulster County Police Academy effective immediately and moves for its adoption.
Councilman Sessa.
Yes.
Councilman McCaffrey.
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran.
Yes, and as everybody knows, Emily already works for us as a, this is a, one Jerry could explain too.
So Emily is a full-time dispatcher with us, has a long family history of police work. If some people, probably Nikki does, remembers Gordon Aldrich was a sergeant for us for many years. This is his daughter, that shows how old we are. I used to work with Gordon back in the day. His daughters worked for us for a while, was a part-time dispatcher, recently took a full-time dispatch job with us. She's been with us a little, about two years now, a full-time few months. Doing a wonderful job, she's decided she wants to become a police officer. So as a valued employee, we are going to sponsor her for phase one and phase two. Tonight's appointment allows her to start phase one in January. That's a six-month process, once she graduates that, since we're appointing her tonight, she'll flow right into phase two. And that's what Michael's starting on Wednesday, but Emily will be doing that.
Michael's one step ahead of her.
Yep, and then once Emily graduates, she'll need to make a decision whether she wants to be a full-time dispatcher or a part-time police officer, but that's something she'll have to confront when that time comes.
Hey, what's been going on the last few years for us to try to get officers? This is great, that we're getting these younger people to step up, so.
Emily lives here in town too, we'd like to keep it that way.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we're not getting old, you're getting old. We did have, we had a lot more hair back then, though, I know that. I don't know what's going on. All right, we'll keep it in the family here, Mr. Aldrich here now too, the father's donating the property. So see how, you know, local, you know, our small town, uncle, sorry, our, our small town is, you know, they're just so great. The people that lived here and grew up here wanna keep traditions, and part of that is Young's Park. And I know most people that have been coming to meetings, we've been talking about this pretty much all year. And Jeff is gonna actually donate Young's Park to the town. There is some stipulations in this because it's a little more than just a donation. So, you know, we do have some expenses here that are involved, so, but it's really not that much for this property. So, you know, it's 5.22 acres. So let me get to it here. So Resolution 109, to authorize the acceptance of the conveyance of a real property and reimbursement of certain costs and transfers, Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following. Whereas the Town of Marlboro, the town leases approximately 5.22 acres of real property, known as Young's Park, the property from Jeff Aldrich, the transfer. And whereas the town utilizes the property for youth baseball and softball recreation, right? And whereas the transfer has offered to convey the property to the town for the purchase price of $0, subject to the conditions that A, the town reimburses and transfers for the cost of subdividing the property from the lands of the transfer, and the costs incurred by the transfer connected to the purpose conveyance consistent of engineering fees, surveyor fees, attorney fees, planning board expenses, and properties be forever known as Young's Park, the property used for youth baseball and softball recreational purposes and perpetuity. And the conveyance become commemorated with a plaque to be placed on the property, all as provided in the contract submitted to the town board on behalf of the transfer of the contract. And the reimbursement expense shall not exceed $16,000 reimbursement expenses. So again, these are for like all the fees from the engineering, the transferring of the property, kinda like what we did with, with Mary Beth, you know, we paid for all the planning board processes. And we're just basically saying not to exceed 16,000. I could tell you the exact number right now is $15,227 is what all that costs. Little more expensive because he had a bigger piece of property and there was some, you know, he has wetlands surrounding that property, and there was a little more that the planning board requested him to do there. So that's where we're at. So, whereas based on the appraisal obtained by the town, the fair market value of the property is $57,000, and well exceeds the sum of the reimbursable expense. And whereas the acceptance of the conveyance of the property on the terms set forth in the proposed contract is the best interest of the town, now therefore be resolved that town is authorized to accept the conveyance of the property upon the terms of the contract. The town supervisor is authorized to enter into the contract substantially in the form submitted to the town board, with such modifications as supervisor, as attorney to the town shall deem reasonable and in the town's interest. And the town authorizes performer contract in accordance with the terms and incur in the reimbursable expenses and certain other expenses in connection there with consistent of a title insurance premium and recording fees in an amount not to exceed $1,000. The question of adoption of the foregone resolution was duly put to vote on a roll call, which resulted in as follows. It's a lot of legal stuff in there. And moves for its adoption.
Supervisor Corcoran.
Yes.
Councilman Sessa.
Yes.
Councilman McCaffrey.
Yes.
Here we go, another park. That's good. So the good thing is, like I told Jeff, it'll forever, ever be Young's Park, because the Town of Marlboro is never going out of business, I hope, so. So it'll be there, so that's a good thing. So thank you, Board, and thank you, Jeff. Okay, Resolution 110, adopt the local law number five of the year 2023. And I'm just gonna go over to, was this the right one? This is the amended one, I wanna make sure I read it right. Yeah, this is the one, I got it. Danielle took care of me, she wrote it up for me, she sent it. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following, whereas a local law was introduced to be known as Local Law Number 5, 2023, entitled Local Law 5 of 2023 to amend Chapter 155 zoning in Article 6, supplementary regulations governing certain uses of Section 155-30, Section B, Design Standards of the Town of Marlboro Zoning Code. Whereas a public hearing in relation to the said local law was held on November 13th, 2023 at 7:00 PM prevailing time. And whereas notice of said public hearing was given pursuant to the terms and provisions of the Municipal Home Rule Law of the State of New York. And whereas said local law has been on the desk of the members of the town board of the Town of Marlboro for at least seven days exclusively, exclusive of Sunday. Whereas the local law involves and involves an amendment to Chapter 155 zoning, Article 6 supplementary regulations governing certain uses, certain, Section 155-30B, Design Standards of the Town of Marlboro Zoning Code. And whereas these amendments are consistent with the goals, objectives, and recommendations of the Town of Marlboro Comprehensive Plan. And whereas on or about September 25th, 2023, the town board declared its intent to act as lead agency and referred the petition to the Town of Marlboro Planning Board, Planning Board in accordance with the Town Code, Section 155-49. And whereas the town board received a response from the Planning Board dated October 19th, 2023, recommending the approval of the zoning text amendment expressed concerns over fire safety and the distance between the buildings. And whereas on or about September 6th, 26th, 2023, the town board referred the petition to the Ulster County Planning Board, accordance with the General Municipal Law 239-M. And whereas the town board received a response from Ulster County Planning Board dated October 4th, 2023. And where it was previously been determined that the adoption of this local law is classified as a type one action under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act and its implementing regulations. 6 NYCRR Park 617, SECR and the Town and Lead Agency hereby determines that the proposed action will not result in a significant adverse impact on the environment and thus declares, authorizes, and approves that a negative declaration be issued. Now therefore be enacted by the Town Board of the Town of Marlboro, the Town Code is amended as follows. Section 1, purpose, the local law is enacted for the purpose of amending Chapter 155 zoning, Article 6 supplementary regulations governing certain uses. Section 155-30B, Design Standards of the Town Marlboro Zoning Code to vary the minimum distance between structures for multiple-family dwellings located on properties of 20 acres or more. And Section 2, amend the Town Marlboro Code entitled Chapter 155 zoning, Article 6, supplementary regulations governing certain uses. Section 30, multi-dwellings shall be and hereby is amended by this local law, which shall read in entirety as follows. 155-30A, lot yard and density regulations, no change. 155-30B, Design Standards, number one, no change, number two, no change, number three, no change. Number four, for the properties of 20 acres or more, the minimum distance between structures for multifamily dwellings, where there are two or more structures on a single lot devoted to multi-dwellings, the minimum distance between structure foundations shall not be less than 15 feet and shall follow the New York State Residential Building Code. Section 3, servability, the invalidity, and I never say that right, invalidity of the, unforeseeably of the section, subsection, paragraph, sentence, clause, provisions, or phrase of the local law as declared by the valid judgment of the court, contempt jurisdiction to be unconstitutional should not affect the validity enforcement of any of the section, subsection, paragraph, sentences, clauses, provisions, or phrases of this local law, which shall remain in full force and effect. Section 4, repeal all ordinances, local laws and parties therefore inconsistent with this local law are hereby repealed. Section 5, authority, the local law is enacted pursuant to the Municipal Home Rule Law. The local law shall supersede the provisions of town law to the extent it is inconsistent with the same and to the extent permitted by the New York State Constitution, the Municipal Home Rule Law, or any other applicable statute. Section 6, effective date, this local law becomes effective upon filing with the Office of New York State Secretary of State in accordance with the Municipal Home Rule Law. The foregone resolution was duly put to a vote, which resulted as follows.
Supervisor Corcoran.
Yes.
Councilman McCaffrey.
Yes.
Councilman Sessa.
Yes.
Thank you, oh, that's it, huh? Mark, you're all good?
This is great, thank you so much.
So tell Mr. Layton I wanna see his application at the planning board by next week, no.
Just, just to make a comment as I, the party, once again saying thank you, but also we do have a team meeting, we have a.
Come on up. Just introduce yourself.
I just, as attorney for the applicant, Mark Blanchard, for the law firm at Blanchard and Wilson, I'm the Blanchard half. And I never get tired of saying that joke, nobody ever laughs. But anyway, so we are actually, we are appreciative of this text amendment. We're appreciative also, this town board had saw fit to grant a map amendment. So we have a green light now to come back in. We have a team meeting tomorrow finalizing our site plan. We do have a preliminary plan that's ready to go, and we should be in shortly into your planning board, so we're excited.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
We're happy to have you.
Yeah, no, we're, we're happy to be here.
And I'll give Scott a call tomorrow, and maybe before your meeting, so.
We're meeting at 11, so.
Maybe I'll do it after, in between my mediation with the PBA. But no, thank you, thanks a lot, thanks.
And congratulations to the new police officers.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
All right, have a good night. All right. And you know what I didn't say tonight? I didn't say, you know, congratulations to everybody that ran, and Mary Beth for running, did a great campaign. I think everything went, you know, as far, as well as can be, everything was a good election, there was no mudslinging like some other places, which was nice, so I like that. And I'm happy to sit here for another two years, and hopefully the, you know, the town respects that enough that maybe I could sit here more than two years later, I don't know. If my wife allows it, I'll stay here as long as I can. So I enjoy doing what I do, I enjoy working with this town board, and I think we're, we're trying to move the town in the right direction, and we're gonna continue to do that. And hopefully it'll keep us here. So having said that, thank you, and Manny, you got the honors tonight.
Wait a minute, we're not done.
Oh, wait, I thought we were done.
More resolution, right?
I thought we were done. Oh, you know why, I had the old resolution up, I'm sorry.
Yes, we did do public comments, so, we did public comments, right?
Yeah, I did that.
Yeah.
Let me just finish this, because I had the old resolution up, so that's why I thought we were done. I thought we had more than that. See, I should've went with my gut when I told Danielle, let's just update the regular one. And Tina's like, no, don't do it. So here we go. Yeah, we gotta do this one, this is a biggie, are we in trouble right now? Resolution 111, oh, I like that. To accept the bid of the Town of Marlboro Community Rec Center rebid for general construction. How could I forget this? Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following, whereas Bell Engineer had prepared bid documents for the Town of Marlboro Community Rec Center rebid for the general construction contract, and whereas the Town of Marlboro Town Clerk's Office and at the direction of the town board, advertised for bids for the general construction contract. And whereas bids were received and opened on November 3rd, 2023. And whereas the following bids were received. Coop Park Construction Company, $249,760. Color Fix Paint Inc., $346,276.66. And Barone Construction Group Inc., $426,300. Whereas Bell Engineer had reviewed the bids for completeness, and all the references were checked. And whereas the references were approved for the low bidder, Coop Park Construction. And whereas the recommendation of Bell Engineer that the contract Town of Marlboro Community Rec Center rebid for general construction contract 2023 be awarded to Coop Park Construction Company. Be resolved that Town Board of Town of Marlboro accept the bid for Coop Park Construction Company in the amount of $249,760 and moves for its adoption.
Yes.
Councilman McCaffrey.
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran.
Yes, thank you. Resolution 112, authorize supervisor sign a contract with Ulster County for the park field improvements and emergency efficiency lights. And this is the $100,000 grant that legislator Corcoran was able to secure for the Town of Marlboro. And thank you, Tom, for, again, this is $700,000 at this point that he's got for the town in two years, so awesome work, and we thank you. So we've been wanting to put lights up on the field for many, many years. So this all works in with getting Young's Field and putting lights, and so it's gonna, it's gonna be great. Because I know, Michael, you remember the days we played out there and it was pitch dark half the time? Well, it's not gonna be that way anymore, right? So we're gonna get that done. So Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following, whereas the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 signed into law on March 11th, 2021, and established Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund with the goal of providing vital federal support. support to local governments. And whereas the county as, and the state and local fiscal recovery fund recipients is authorized to issue sub-awards. And whereas the county desires to issue a sub-award for the Town of Marlboro for the purpose of purchasing and installation of new energy-efficient field lighting. Field expansion, fencing installation, and addition of league-appropriate bases and backstops at both Young's Park and Cluett Shants Park. Be it resolved, the town board, the Town of Marlboro hereby authorize the town supervisor to sign a contract with Ulster County for park improvements and moves for its adoption.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cappy?
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes. Ah, awesome. So here we go. It might take a little while to get the money, but we're going to get it. So that's a good thing. So thanks again to our legislator, Corcoran, and to the county itself. Again, the county has been very good at helping out the different municipalities over the past year. And what was the total you gave out? $18 million? $34 million? So, I mean, that's good. They didn't actually have to do that. So they decided to distribute it throughout the municipalities and at the request of all the supervisors and they actually did listen to us. So that's a good thing. So again, thanks again. So now, Manny.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I need a second.
Second. Maybe I'll make you guys sit here a little longer.
You beat me tonight. So 7:56, we are adjourned.
Oh, Mary Beth wanted to speak.
Oh, Mary Beth. Come on up, Mary Beth.
I just want to.
I'm sorry.
Especially if you're here. I just want to share a little, a little story and it won't be long. So as you know, I'm a nurse. And so for many years, I was the administrator at night. And so at a thousand-bed hospital in Detroit and then the last 32 at Memorial. And so as the off-shift supervisor administrator, you get called for everything. Patients with guns, drug deals, this was happening in the hospital, theft, all kinds of things. So I preface this because, you know, I was used to being in command and I would be the one called and giving the orders and so forth. So not too long ago, I came upon a situation and one of our neighbors was having a full-blown PTSD reaction. And so I encountered, there were five policemen. And so, and you know what? You just revert back to your, your, what you were for so long. And so I came upon them and they were, and I said, whoa, whoa, what are you guys doing? And they said, oh, you know, this, having a PTSD. So I said, whoa, 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 I'm not sure that five men in uniform with guns is the best approach in this situation. And I have to say, I don't know why, they listened to me. I mean, they were very nice. And I said, I would like to go up first. I, you know, I said, I'm a nurse. I'd like to go up first. So I went up and, you know, the person knew who I was and was oriented to time and place. And then the police came and, and it was a little overwhelming with all five of them. But I just am saying this because they demonstrated the most professional, kind, sympathetic approach that you could only have. It was like a movie that this is how it should be done. It was really, really remarkable. And they, they weren't in a rush and they gave him time. It was, it was just really heartrending. And so I just want to thank Jerry to be the leader of men that way, men, they were all men that day. And hopefully you can aspire to have that same sort of demeanor in that kind of a situation. And I don't know if they get training with EDPs or what, but they were exemplary, very, very good.
They're good. That's, that's very nice.
Yeah.
And they do get training.
And I wanted to say this publicly because, and I regret that I didn't get their name, but they were, you probably know.
Yeah. And you're all appreciative of you being there because under certain situations, they do recognize that five police officers coming up summoning military man, ex-military man, PTSD, it does create additional issues. So having somebody like yourself that was willing to go and upgoing that subject actually makes things a lot easier for all.
Oh.
It does create a situation where it can go sour and really it's a hands-on situation. That's what they were trying to avoid, hence why being so patient. And when you did approach, they were very appreciative of your offering. Obviously, it jumped right out.
Yeah. Well, I, you know, after the fact, I thought, oh, my God. You know, I wasn't like, oh, how are you? I was like, whoa, hold on. So, but thank you very much. So thank you. All right, that's it. Okay.
That's very good. Good night. All right. Well, now we're exactly 8:00 PM. Okay. All right. We're done. Michael, you're in. Have fun at the academy. Phase two.